Okay, we'll call to order the ZBA meeting of October 7th, 2025. Just a little after 6 o'clock. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Okay. Look for a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
With support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move to conflict of interest. Do we have any conflict of interest for this here?
No.
See and none? We'll move to approval of minutes of June 3rd, 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. And we will move to public comment. Anyone will have up to three minutes to speak. And we're gonna go ahead and try to use the counter here so everyone can see. And that way, there's no surprise from anyone. So feel free to go up to the microphone and please state your name and address.
Hi. My name is Sally Isley and I live at 1461 Cedar Drive. And thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. So I'm a 10-year resident of the Peninsula. And when I moved to my property, I was told that the land across the street from me, which is the land in question right now for the variance, could never be developed. So that was Realtor language. Maybe it was true, maybe it wasn't. But I didn't question it. Why? Because it's obvious. You know, the land in question is part of a wetland. It's part of an important ecosystem. And it's critical to the Long Lake watershed. It's largely marsh-like for most of the year. And it's part of an ecosystem that supports all manner of plant and animal life. Owls, hawks, deer, we've got fox, we've got spring peepers, bullfrogs, squirrels. It's a daily flyover zone for the loons that we all cherish. And so the wetland is of great value to the watershed. It serves as a natural filter. As we all know, wetlands improve water quality. They mitigate floodwater. They provide critical habitat for the wildlife. And all of this is threatened by a plan to build housing on this parcel. And the fact that variances are required to do so in the case of this one property on the parcel, by essentially building out over the wetland itself and building closer to the road, would suggest to me that the whole plan is folly. All of these concerns directly speak to the key points in your criteria that you're looking at right now as you evaluate this request. The impact on the natural area and the impact on the community that lives there. And another point in your evaluation is the potential impact on property values. And I would argue that the natural surroundings themselves contribute greatly to the property values on our beautiful Peninsula. That's why we're there. And that's why many of us move there. So you are a critical decision-making body in this process. And you are. Michigan's wet law, or wetland protection law, does exempt many of these smaller wetland parcels that are isolated from adjacent surface waters. But that was a political compromise. And recognizing the vital importance that small wetlands play in our watersheds, the original drafter of Michigan's wetland law authorized local governments with the legal authority to protect these valued resources. So that means there's a great deal in your hands right now. And this means a great deal to everybody in this room. To date, there's a lot we know about the value of the wetlands. There's a great deal we don't know at all about this particular parcel. Why? Because to my knowledge and from conversations with both Eagle and the Township zoning manager, no one's actually done an environmental assessment. I think that's my little cue to let go. So I would just urge you in the strongest possible terms to reject these variance requests or at a minimum defer them until proper evaluation has been done. I would just say, I've lived and worked in many parts of our country, both coasts, Chicago, Southeast Michigan. Nowhere do we have anything comparable to the natural resources that draw us all here. We have the rare luxury of ample freshwater land space upon which to live. We don't have to compromise our wetlands to make room for those of us who wish to make their homes here. And so thank you for the consideration of my concerns.
Thank you. And maybe I should have maybe clarified a little bit too. What you did was fine. There is this three-minute period. There will also be another three-minute period during the actual applicant's hearing as well. So if whoever else would like to speak now, you may. But you will have a chance during the applicant's hearing as well.
Okay. I might have more to say.
Thank you. Anyone now would like to speak? Okay. See and none? We will close the public comments and we'll, it looks like no postponed business. So we'll move right into the public hearing. Case ZBA 10-2502. Mark Nichols? Is that correct? Michaels? Mike with an I? Okay, thank you. Property identification, property ID 2808-185-04500, Section 27, Long Lake Township, Grand Traverse County Common Lane, addressed as 1412 Cedar Drive, Traverse City, Michigan 49685. Parcel zoned low-density residential. Proposed, one, construct a new single-family dwelling. Variance requested is an eight-foot variance from the required 50-foot yard setback per Section 12.2. And proposed, two, construct a front deck approximately 385 square feet. The variance requested, two, is an eight-foot, five-inch variance from the required 50-foot front yard setback and 10-foot encroachment allotment for uncovered decks per Section 12.2 District Regulations and Section 4.16 Deck Porches and Patios. So we will open the public hearing at, looks like 6:10. And once again, I'll ask if there's any conflicts of interest for this hearing? Okay. Seeing none? We'll look for a presentation by staff.
Okay, thank you. So Mark Michaels is the owner of 1412 Cedar Drive and he's requesting approval to construct a single-family dwelling with a front deck on his property. The parcel is a non-conforming low-density residential lot encompassing approximately .94 acres. The lot is constrained by a 50-foot front yard setback and the presence of wetlands located at the rear of the property. Originally, the parcel consists of Lot 45 and 46 of the Peninsula State subdivision. These lots have since been legally combined into a single zoning lot, now identified as Lot 45. In my discussions with Mr. Michaels, he explained that the combination of the wetlands and the required front setback leaves him with limited buildable area. When asked whether a smaller home might fit within the buildable envelope, Mr. Michaels noted that Long Lake Peninsula Association requires a minimum home size of 1,500 square feet, which restricts his options. Mr. Michaels also held a pre-application meeting with the Michigan Department of Environmental, or Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle. They reviewed the wetland delineation conducted by GEI consultants in November of 2024 and confirmed its accuracy. The Water Resources Division determined that no permit is required for the proposed construction. To proceed with the project, Mr. Michaels is requesting two variances, an eight-foot variance from the 50-foot front yard setback, requirement to construct a single-family home, and an eight-foot, five-inch variance from the combined 50-foot front yard setback, and a 10-foot encroachment allowance for uncovered decks. So to kind of explain that, the ordinance, if it's an uncovered deck porch or patio, you can encroach on a required setback as long as it's not a waterside setback up to 10 feet. So that's what that means. And also, the original site plan has two homes on it. And when we spoke the first time, he was in need of two variances for both homes. And he worked pretty hard to get the other home on Hillside to fit, not exactly what he wanted, but we got it fitted. So he does not need a variance for that. He'll be able to construct that with just a land use from us. So that, you can just disregard that on Hillside. It's just the cedar that we're looking at today.
Any questions for Matt at this time?
Yeah, he has two separate parcels joined into one, correct?
Yeah, it was two lots and they were, we stumbled upon it as we started doing this. They were combined for, I believe, assessing purposes. And then he just legally combined them into one zoning lot. So they're all, it's a single Lot 45 now. And the assessor confirmed with me this morning that that has been completed in there. And it's good.
So there's two different buildings he's putting on the same property, basically?
No. The other lot on Hillside is completely separate. That's a totally different parcel. Lot 45 and 46 are what this, you're looking at today are on. This piece right here used to be two parcels that this house is being requested on.
Originally, it was all like five parcels.
Yes, it was. And it's been goofy over the years. But the one on Hillside is its own separate parcel and doesn't have anything to do with this one. These two parcels have been combined into one. So you're looking at one zoning lot of record when you're looking at this survey.
Okay. On Exhibit F, is the line that is our parcel furthest to the, might be to the, I don't know what direction.
The west?
To the north? Is that the line that intersects that driveway? Is that the northmost of the second parcel? The two parcels combined?
Hmm. I don't believe he has the two parcel lots on this. I believe it's all, it was all just surveyed as one parcel. I guess I don't know what line you're talking about.
Oh, there's a line on there.
I was just looking at this. Are these the two parcels that were assessed together and are now combined? Is there any issue with?
No, I think this is all, this is all these.
So this here is all one? Okay, okay. Yeah, I was, I got it. I was kind of counting three, that's why I was confused.
It used to be like Lloyd said, it was all broken up. But that's all one now.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions?
The dimension that's, the deck and the variance on the, that'd be the right-hand side of the house is 12'7", it looks like, is the dimension on the plans. What's the dimension at the corner that's at an angle? Is that 18 feet? 16 feet? I can't read it on the drawings.
18.05 is what that dimension is. From the 50-foot setback to the corner of that deck. Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yeah. That's why he needs the eight-foot, five-inch variance. Because he gets 10 foot of it, can encroach per the ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go ahead and move to comments and explanations by the applicant if they choose.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Mark Michaels. Came out from Seattle to do this, but I am from Midland. That's my home. And this is looking to be my retirement home in the future. And I definitely made efforts to avoid the wetland. And that was kind of what this engineered drawing was about. I had Gordy Fraser work on that. So we're definitely within compliance. And I didn't want to impact the wetland. So that was the purpose of going to this extent with the drawing. But yeah, I appreciate you hearing this and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, the, our Long Lake Township zoning ordinance require, or smallest house you can have is 960 square feet. Now, in the paperwork we got, it says that the Peninsula Association has 1,500 square feet?
Correct.
Okay, is there any type of, like you're doing here, you're trying to get a variance from us? Have you tried to get a variance from them? To make a smaller house?
I have not.
Okay. Is there a method for doing that, a procedure?
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah. I haven't gotten any feedback on that.
Okay.
And reached out, I think I reached out to one member at one point to just get a sense of what the township required. And it seemed I was gonna have to move forward with some kind of variance on the road if the, you know, if the Peninsula required 1,500 square feet. So that's just the avenue I pursued. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to open the public hearing to public comment. And as we talked about at the beginning, this is the second one for the hearing. So any person may speak up to three minutes. And we'll go ahead and try to use the counter. That seemed to work well. So anyone that would like to speak? Please come on up and just be sure to say your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Charles Armour. I'm a resident of 1497 Cedar Drive. I've lived there for 25 years. I've observed the parcels in question during all four seasons, obviously, during that span of time. And each year, for three to five months, standing water is visible on those parcels. Even today, the ground is somewhat damp in certain portions of that area. And I believe adding fill to those parcels, if that indeed is what's necessary to construct a home, would likely cause runoff to the lowest portion of that section of vacant land. Not necessarily on these parcels, but to the adjacent parcel owned by the Damrons. And that is already occupied by a significant pond that is probably 10 feet away from their basement. And I know in the past, they've already had water incursion from that pond. And my comment is allowing fill and development on these lots in question is likely going to exacerbate the problems that the Damrons currently face with, you know, water retention in that pond because it's essentially adjacent to the proposed construction.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ellie Hudson, 1362 Outer Drive. One of the other low-lying areas that's not pictured on this map is our community park. As a mother of a six-year-old who goes there all the time, and this park has been essential for my sanity during these interesting years. I could also see that with the fill, that's, it threatens that area. I'm very concerned about that. And I also, I just want to point out, you seem like a nice guy. You'd fit in our neighborhood. We know each other. We are all sitting together. My husband and I came together and I don't think anyone else did. So we're not doing this because we don't want to welcome someone new. We do that all the time. It's just the threat, the threats to our resources. And because we walk our dogs, we walk ourselves, we drive our golf carts past this point in the middle of the Peninsula every day, multiple times. And it's, it does not pass the eye test. It just doesn't make any sense. And it seems like it would impact us negatively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Therese Waters, 7739 Outer Drive South, and also own a vacant lot at 7750. Been homeowner in the Long Lake Peninsula for almost 30 years. I think the burden that's been created by this situation, this particular lot, is that you've, it has almost forced this gentleman into purchasing and combining two lots rather than one. When the LLPA was established, it was a residential subdivision in the 70s. And the lots were subdivided and sold kind of as-is. And at that time, the roads were probably porous surface gravel. No other homes back there with septic fields, et cetera. And I'm not sure if those things were considered when the lots were created. Also, the 1,500 square foot requirement is a burden on this lot, I think. And also, obviously, this gentleman seems to be very committed to protecting the wetlands, as we all are. So I personally reviewed the application. I sat on the LLPA board. I was a building in-sight chair for a while. It seems like he did a lot of work looking to appropriate state and local agencies for guidance. Purchased two lots, combined them in order to, instead of build two homes, build just one. I do support pretty strongly the owner's property rights. Whoever owns this property, or as it was, two lots, was burdened by the taxes they paid on those lots and also on the fees assessed to them by the Long Lake Peninsula Association. We've heard the story before, people being told specific lots were quote-unquote unbuildable. I'm not sure how that's totally worked out. I think that he has taken on a lot to purchase two lots, work really hard to put this property in a place that makes sense and to be eco-sensitive. I also appreciate, as a physical therapist, that he is trying to create a home. I looked at the plan that will be, that will look to the future, that he has first-floor living available, especially if it's a place you're gonna retire in. So I do support this. And I think it was done with particular care. So appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
David Hankey, 8095 Outer Drive South on the Peninsula. Been involved with the community for 46 years on the Peninsula. Just a reminder, this isn't necessity or hardship. Sure, there's a right to use, but not at the expense of ordinances and the environment. This property has been declined by the township three times for bills. Previous zoning boards were grounded on hardship and necessity where variances were applied. What is the current buffer to the road to this wetland is questionable. Structures and driveways will definitely move this impervious surface closer to the wetland, which will impact the ecosystem, disrupting the watershed and potentially impacting neighboring properties. As you've heard, everyone says that their home is going, this is going to be their home. They're gonna care for the wetlands. They're gonna care for, during the construction. It has been a convenience to say that. And it never seems to ever work out. You always have builders who tend to step over these perimeters and lines. And you are building close to these sensitive areas. A number of those homes that we've heard this from recently that had been built have turned into Airbnbs. This isn't a township or community investment. So to say it'll improve property values and add tax revenue sends a message to us constituents that that is all that is cared about, not protecting our environment in the township. We're protecting neighboring properties. Ask what studies have been done on this ecosystem that this will impact it? What about the watershed? How will you enforce violations? Don't leave it to the county or Eagle. Everyone just finger points at the enforcement to one or the other. As stewards through our community, it is your obligation to protect our properties as well as the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello. Thank you, Board, for having us tonight. My name's David Walts. I'm a resident at 1362 West Outer Drive and Long Lake Peninsula Association. I'll start with a quick story. My daughter, my lovely wife Ellie, she was born in 2019. And every day for three years of her life, I was a stay-at-home dad, took care of her, walked around the neighborhood. First time she ever saw a deer was on this lot. First time she ever saw a squirrel, probably on this lot or one right next to it. I think about the importance of the rights of this landowner. And I completely and utterly respect and understand that. However, we live in a neighborhood that has, and a township, that has rules and regulations for a reason. We bought our home. Home was built on my property's lot, all within the boundaries and agreed-upon rules, limitations, setbacks, of doing things the right way. I look at this chart and I see green and I see a very, very thin line between green and something that's being pigeonholed and squeezed into a lot that's completely inappropriate for, you know, for the impact of the wetland that this will occur. Even though the wetland line is right there, it seems to me that, you know, allowing something so close to such a sensitive area where such incredible amount of wildlife, birds, and of course, the watershed issue that all of my neighbors have expressed regarding where that water goes, it's never dry. There's never, I don't know why anyone would want to build in this lot. It is literally a swamp. We refer to it as the swamp. And so the impact on this land that I see by the addition of a whole series of impervious surfaces, moving soil around, I can't fathom the idea of anything building on this land without a tremendous amount of impact to our roads, construction traffic, trucks, the whole nine. But more than anything, I don't want to see the loss of that beautiful piece of wilderness. We all follow the rules. There's a vacant lot next to mine that's not been built on because of the 50-foot setback variance. I suspect that someday that will be challenged. I lose sleep at night worrying about somebody building a house in my backyard within 10 feet of my bedroom window because, you know, of a potential variance issue. So I'd hate the idea of setting a precedent for anyone who lives and thrives by the property boundaries and the, let's say, the space that we enjoy from the rules that have been set that we all follow. Beyond that, I love our neighborhood and I love the character of it. I love the wildlife that we have. I fear the loss of birds, animals, deer. And I certainly fear the loss of our water quality. So thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else like to talk?
So I'll just speak off the cup. And I hope my three minutes from before Hannibal would be applied to this public comment session.
For sure.
Yeah. And I would just like to go back and emphasize that that this, this board has an incredibly important role. And what you don't know, because this work hasn't been done, is actually what the natural features are of this wetland. We don't know that because Eagle hasn't done it and the township hasn't done it. And so this is all a discussion about whether, you know, we should issue a variance for the 10-and-a-half-foot, you know, porch over the wetland and all of that. And I would just say, that work can be done and it should be done. Because again, you know, wetlands are, really, the most important wetlands are small parcels that add up to something larger, which is, you know, a critical part of the watershed, water quality. something larger, which is, you know, a critical part of the watershed, water quality, et cetera. And we need to know that, and we should have a right to know that. You should have a right to know that before you make a decision on this. And I, you know, I'm not anti-development. I bought a house. This is not nimbyism. You know, I think we all have to learn to live together, but we, but I am deeply committed to getting a proper assessment of what is at risk for this peninsula. And I know, I'm sure you've all been out there, the Long Lake Peninsula is, you know, it's basically an island in the archipelago in Long Lake, and critical to the overall ecosystem, not just on the peninsula, but in the entire Long Lake watershed, which is a spring-fed lake, one of the most pristine lakes in northern Michigan, that needs our protection even as we look for ways that we can make space for others to live here. And so, I think I'm just saying, I don't think there's enough information to make a decision, you know, an informed decision about not just whether this is going to fit within the, you know, specs of the LLPA, which actually doesn't, there's going to be another permit process, Eagle's going to require another permit process. But none of that is, that's all fine and well, but what we don't know, because no environmental assessment has been done of this parcel, is just how fragile, just how important is this to us. And I would add that if I was a homeowner, I many, many times, thank my lucky stars, that I live on a hill, because I don't worry about leaky basements, and I don't worry about flooding, and I'm grateful for that. But anyone who would build in this marsh is going to face not only those issues, but insurance issues. And, you know, I just think more consideration is needed, and I know, once again, I got the boot.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Calling for the last time. All right, we'll close the public hearing to public comment at about 6:35, and we'll open up for questions and discussions by the ZBA.
I have one, that's okay. Just a little bit more understanding of, I understand our minimum square footage. Do we, so we recognize their minimum square footage?
No. No, we don't uphold anybody's HOA rules, any deed restrictions. If someone from the Long Lake Peninsula came into the township and applied for a land used to build a home for 1,000 square feet, I would give him that land use if it met the parameters and the setbacks and everything, and then they would have to fight their association. We don't, we don't do that. And actually, our attorneys have told us many times that we can't legally do that. It's their rules that they have made between their associations, their deeds or covenants are civil between them.
Okay.
I have a question, Matt. It's, one of the gentlemen stated that there's other cases associated with this property. Are you aware of any?
I don't, I don't know.
Is that all?
I don't. I know that, I know that somebody spoke to, and everybody conforming on the Peninsula, there's a lot of variances that have been given to people on the Peninsula, like a lot. So, I don't, I don't, that's not very true that everybody lives in the confinement. Almost every lot in there is not conforming to our ordinance, so there's that.
And I remember when I first, when we first put this together, the changes in the zoning ordinance, there was a big issue about how much more it was going to create other cases, and that was all considered.
Yeah, I'm not saying there wasn't, because I don't know that for sure, but I don't, and it wouldn't affect this case, so I didn't dig that deep into it.
I just wanted to let you know that was a big consideration. I board at that time, that they knew situations like this.
Well, I mean, all of these low-density residential lots, our ordinance have to be an acre, and there's rarely any of them in there that are, some have them, but not a lot.
I have a question. I've heard two or three people mention fill. I know in your application, you said that you were not going to put any fill in. Is it on a cross base, or how's the foundation of the structure?
It is a, I guess you'd call it a walkout. So, it will be, there'll be a basement-type foundation, but it'll be a walkout, and then a main level.
And steps up to the first floor?
Correct.
I have another question. There's no restrictions when they subdivide these properties as to wetland boundaries or anything? They can make lots that are what, 95% wetland in?
As long as it, as long as it meets the State Land Division Act and our Land Division ordinance, then it's an administrative approval. There's no, you know what I mean? So, this was just, this wasn't even that. It was just, he was just combining two lots, which doesn't even, you know, he's not dividing anything. You can combine, you know, if you're in property next door, people do it all the time.
I'm referring to the original five lots that, when they originally built it, they had five lots there.
When they subdivided that, they didn't, we didn't have zoning.
Probably not, right?
Because that was back in the, what, the 60s or 70s?
79 is when zoning came into effect.
Yeah, but I mean, the subdivision of Long Lake.
Late 60s.
Yeah. So, they didn't even think about one-acre lots or anything like that.
Correct.
I have one question of the owner. Would it be possible to get, to do what you need to do as far as living space and your garage and everything in a smaller home? You know, could you shrink your dimensions some?
It would be difficult. I would probably have to go to a completely different home to design it. And just like I kind of purchased this and have designed it, it's such a matter of fifty hundred square foot, which includes, you know, just the living space, because that can include garage dimensions. But just because of the orientation of the lot and the narrowness of it, it would be very difficult. I'd have to zero my surgeon to find a home that's difficult. If it went smaller, I think it would be more of a tavern than a home.
Oh, I agree with you there.
Yes, I have one question, Mark. Do you plan on all turning this into an Airbnb as a source of income or any type of income other than just Airbnb as like a rental when you're out of town?
It's not, you know, I'm a bit, I'm true. I still live in Seattle.
And then you're going to retire here, is that what you're planning, retire here?
Yeah, my family's in Midland. I actually did my residency there in Monsoon, so this is, you know, I don't know.
Hey, Dwayne. I do want to note, so the Long Lake Association, or the Peninsula Association, has made their own rules that they are capping short-term rentals, which they are allowed to do, and they are currently over the cap that they have set. So, even if he wanted to get a short-term rental permit, the Peninsula would not allow him to. So, just FYI.
I have another question. The, when I'm looking at the blueprints that you supplied, it looks like the garage is in the back half of the house, but the driveway on the drawings comes in the front? Basically, it'd be coming right through the chimney? Is that, is there a?
There may be an imposition there, that the driveway does kind of come in the back, and that garage is in the back now. That's correct. If it illustrates it coming in the front by the chimney, that's, that would be an imposition.
Is it right here?
Yes, correct.
Have we looked behind you there, Max? It's right, right there. So, it's going to come off the drive here.
Okay, that's a different drawing than the ones that we have.
He sent me an updated, which I provided you guys today, added those with, yeah.
I wasn't looking at the other one.
Those were, those were in the original packet, because I just received them a couple days ago.
I just assumed they were the same that I already had.
Yeah, sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have told you that.
Okay, I get it. I see it now.
Other questions?
Anything else from anyone? Go ahead and move in. So, just so everyone's aware, I'll try to explain the next step here. So, we go through what we call the findings of fact. There's seven items, or six, six items that we'll go through each one, we will vote on each one. If one of those six are voted down, then that variance will be voted down. So, we'll go through this two times. We'll go through the first request for variance, and then we'll go through the second request for variance. So, we'll do the first one for the home, and then we'll do the one for the deck, and we'll just go through the same procedure. We'll talk about each of the six and the findings of fact, and then we'll vote on each one. And if these are found correct and voted upon, then the variance is approved. And it's really as simple as that, just following our ordinance, looking at what the ordinance requires us to vary from, and then it'll give us a determination. So, that's kind of where we'll go. So, I guess I would first look for, I always lose that first page, the general findings of fact.
I move to accept the general findings of fact.
Items one through seven, I would put in there?
Yes, one through seven.
And it looks like all new correspondence is under K. There's no new number or letter.
I'll second.
Okay, those all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we'll move to the findings of fact. We'll first, as we discussed, we will go through as an eight-foot variance from the required 50-foot front yard setback per Section 12.2. So, findings of fact under Section 23.043A of the zoning ordinance, of the zoning ordinance, we'll start with number one, that the need for the requested variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions such as narrowness, shallowness, shape, water, or topography of the property involved, and that the practical difficulty is not due to the applicant's personal or economic hardship.
Well, I think it does mean that because of the, the narrowness in the water is also an issue as well, is what's causing him to not meet the standards purport by the Peninsula Township Organization. And then also, the building, the building is so small that in order to meet the requirements, it almost impossible because of the smaller board. I had to do some exhibits, I'd say F, which is, sort of drawn and general findings of fact. And I guess you could also say aye as well, because Eagle did confirm that it is wetlands, right?
Yes. Now, it's been so long since we had to do one of these. Do you need a second to that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, with a? With a second, and do you have all the exhibits and everything?
There was some questions, the water, small building, and below, and F, I, the general findings of fact.
Okay, with a?
I would put wetland boundaries in there. It's not really the water, though there is water, standing water in there, it looks like most of the time, but it's the wetland boundary that creates the?
Yeah.
The need.
Okay, with a second, all those in favor that number one has been met signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, number one has passed. Number two, that the need for the requested variance is not the result or actions of the property owner, self-created or previous property owners.
I would say that that standard's been met. It's certainly not self-created. He combined two lots to try and improve the situation. Unfortunately, if you apply the road setback, 50-foot setback from the road, almost all of the property is, that's not wetland, is in that 50-foot setback. So, you have a little sliver in the corner where he's trying to put the house, and that's what's forcing him into the front yard setback. But I don't believe that it was self-created. Exhibit, exhibit F, I guess you can use aye again, which is the stuff from Eagle. Site visit. And I'll second that.
Okay, with a second. All those in favor that number two has been met signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, number two has passed. Four zero. Number three, that the strict compliance with area setback, frontage height, bulk density, or other dimensional requirements will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Just as a note, because a property owner may incur additional cost in complying with this ordinance, does not automatically make compliance unreasonably burdensome.
This is the difficult one.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I, I believe that Mark has, has done everything he can. I don't think you can encroach any closer to the wetlands, which was really the concern of most of the people that spoke today, was affecting the wetland. The house is 25 feet wide, I don't think you can build a house narrower than that that makes sense. You just, you just don't have enough room to, to do what you need to do. And I think forcing the house eight feet into the front yard is a reasonable accommodation to prevent getting into a wetland issue. So I do think that strict compliance would, would probably make it impossible to fit a house on the lot.
And I think the strict compliance with the, uh, the association's 1,500 square feet minimum doesn't help it at all either.
Max, can I add? He had to also abide by our minimum standard of 24 by 24 core living area. So it could be any skinnier than 24.
You're basically stuck in the front yard setback.
Yeah, so just, I should've said that earlier.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that, but you're right. Same exhibits as, uh, item two.
I guess I am. I'm listening. I'll second that. At the point, the batteries are out, but I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, with Dwayne's second, um, all those in favor that, that number three has met, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? See and none, four zero, passed. We'll move to number four, that the requested variance will do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as to other property owners in the district, or whether a lesser relaxation than applied for would give substantial relief to the owner of the property involved and be more consistent with justice to other property owners.
I think it would do substantial justice to the applicant, because everyone else living on the peninsula has to abide by the same, uh, regulations that the association, association has put together, and it seems like he's done everything he could to meet that. So I think that would justify that.
And with the 24-foot minimum width of a house, uh, there's, there's no way that a lesser relaxation can help.
Exactly, yep.
I'll second that.
I'd say the same, uh, exhibits. But I'd also include the general findings of facts as well.
Max, you're still second on that?
Yes.
Okay, with Max has second, um, all those in favor that number four has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? See and none, four passed. Four zero. Number five, that the requested variance will not cause adverse impact on surrounding property, property values, or the use and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood.
This one is sticky with me. I think that the requested variance will not cause adverse impact on property values. But, um, the use and enjoyment of the property in the neighborhood, though. Maybe the township, or not the township, the association should have bought this property and made it into a park.
But I, at the same token, I don't think it's gonna affect the wildlife.
No, I don't think so.
Because it's, wildlife is gonna do what it's gonna do.
Yeah.
No one can control it.
I've got deer walk up to my house every day.
I got deer, coyotes, fox.
Yeah.
You name it.
Just lost a chicken the other day.
Yep. And then, yeah, even, yeah, it's just, it's everywhere, so. That's why I don't feel that, you know, animals adapt and overcome, they're, they're animals, so.
Once again, there's a lot of opposition in the audience because of the wetland and what, what effect that might have on the wetland. I'm not sure what the standards of Eagle are, but the letter from Eagle says that no permit is required, um, which, I, I worked construction for 30-some years, and there's a permit required for everything, so I'm assuming if Eagle says that you don't need a permit to build the house there, they're not concerned about adverse impacts on that wetland from the proximity. If that was a motion, I'll second it. Was that you? No?
No. But if you're making the motion-
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Same exhibits and general findings of fact again. Is the wetland delineation included in the Eagle stuff, or is that a separate? Is that I? Oh, that's part of I, okay.
That's I, part of I, yeah.
We're good.
Okay, um, with that, uh, all those in favor that number five has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, number five has passed. And number six is not applicable. So I'd look for a motion for approval?
I'll move that we approve the first variance for the eight-foot variance as required by the 50-foot, uh, front yard setback, um, because of the individual findings of facts and the, uh, general findings of facts as presented.
I'll second that. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, first variance has passed. We'll move to the second variance. Which is an eight-foot, five-inch variance from the required 50-foot, uh, front yard setback and 10-foot encroachment allotment for uncovered decks per section 12.2. So we'll go, we'll start with number one again, that the need for the requested variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions such as narrowness, shallowness, shape, water, or topography of the property involved, and that the practical difficulty is not due to the applicant's personal or economic hardship.
So is that correct, that it's going to be 18 feet?
At the widest part, yes. The whole, the whole thing is not 18 feet, but that widest part there.
Where it kind of peaks there on the-
Yeah.
Well, as I'm looking at on the right side, I guess, I mean, toward the wetland side.
I think the deck itself is 11 feet wide, is that correct? Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna say that standard has been met, um, same reasons as one in the last one, the, the wetland delineation, uh, or wetland boundary, um, basically forces the entire front of the house to be inside the 50-foot front setback, so any kind of porch, uh, stairway, anything to get to the front door is gonna, is gonna extend into the front setback, and I don't see any way around that to get, to go where you need to get.
I would second that. Same exhibits as first one, Max?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor that number one has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? One passed. Four zero. Move to number two, that the need for the requested variance is not the result of actions of the property owner, self-created or previous property owners.
I think this one is met, uh, for the same reasons as this section of the first variance.
I'll second that.
Same exhibits?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor that number two has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Two passed. Number three, that strict compliance with area setback, frontage height, bulk density, or other dimensional requirements will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. And once again, just because a property owner may incur additional cost and complying with this ordinance does not automatically make compliance unreasonably burdensome.
I think that has been met, and you can use the same rationale as number three from first variance. With the same, uh, the same exhibits.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a second, um, all those in favor that number three has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Three passed. Uh, number four, that the requested variance will do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as to other property owners in the district, or whether a lesser relaxation than applied for would give substantial relief to the owner of the property involved and be more consistent with justice to other property owners.
Uh, there again, I think it does meet the standard, uh, as stated in the first, uh, variance request.
And I'll second that.
And with the same exhibits as prior.
Okay, all those in favor that number four has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Number five, that the requested variance will not cause adverse impacts on surrounding property, property values, or the use and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood. I, I believe this one also meets the last, number five, with the same exhibits. And has met.
I'll second that.
All those in favor that number five has been met signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed, four zero. Number six is not applicable. I would look for a motion for variance two approval.
I'll second that.
With a second, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, uh, both your variances were approved. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to number nine, pending business, I see none. Uh, new business, I see none. And there is a last public comment. Once again, the same, same process, anyone can speak up to three minutes. If you would like, you could come up now and speak.
Yes, David Hanke, 8095 Outer Drive. I, I, I really believe you should have requested some form of study being done on building structure that is pervious, and what it will have as far as an impact to the environment around, whether, as others have mentioned, you've got neighbors who've always already experienced water issues. Now you're gonna have this much less square footage that's gonna be able to absorb water and run off from the road in the surrounding area, which has been done for well over 100 years. This particular section itself wasn't really developed until probably about thirty to forty years ago, so.
Thank you.
I'll be short, since I've already gone over twice, but I feel like you have made decisions um in a black hole. You don't know what the fragility is of that wetland parcel, and I don't feel as though you gave accurate or appropriate consideration to the value of those smaller wetland parcels in the larger watershed system, and and this is something that, it's a price we will all pay. Uh, it's not enough to say, oh, well, deer go up to my house all the time. No, no, there was a void of information. You don't know, and we didn't get it. You didn't get it, Eagle hasn't gotten it, maybe the Long Lake Peninsula Association will get it, because there's a permitting process that has to go through both the LLPA and also uh Eagle, again, which, which has not given a green light. They've just defined the parameter of the wetland. They didn't green light this project. We can't say, well, because Eagle didn't say no, we should just go ahead. So I feel like this was a very superficial decision that could bear consequences for all of us down the road, and it's, it's very disappointing.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave Walts, one-three-six-two, Outer Drive, again. I, yeah, I just, I have to agree with my uh my neighbors. I had a really hard time hearing your discussion and the glibness with which you uh approached uh specifically item number five, that the requested variance will not cause adverse impacts on the surrounding property, property values, or the use and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood. You just listened to uh six, seven of our neighbors who explicitly said that this variance will cause uh adverse impacts on the use and enjoyment of the property in the neighborhood. That's explicitly what we came out here to tell you tonight. The idea, the glibness with which you suggested that, oh, Eagle doesn't need a permit, then everything must be fine, passing the buck to Eagle, I think. For all of Eagle's woes, uh, they're not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. Um, Eagle's a mess, um, but I agree with uh my neighbors when they said that, then why say yes? Why say yes? And um, you know, the idea that, oh, the animals are just everywhere, I I think uh is is the reason why we're losing. Fifty percent or more of our wetland is gone in this country. It's, it's diminishing a little by little every year. Wildlife species are are being decimated. Um, there's a a distinct lack of of variety in in my neighborhood that I've seen since I've lived here for ten years, seeing few and fewer birds, uh, seeing uh major, you know, uh, issues we've had with high water. Already, we've had major E. coli problems in Long Lake. Um, the idea that we're just rubber-stamping this, I think, is is a, is a, is a, is a big mistake, and I think we should've slowed down, taken time to understand this very particular piece of property because of its uh, its uh, you know, proximity to uh probably the most sensitive area in our neighborhood. Um, and yeah, there's, there's still a lot more permitting to be done. It's a shame what happened here tonight, but um, I can say, for me, um, my use and enjoyment of the property in this neighborhood will be adversely affected, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we will move to reports. Uh, Planning Commission representative.
Um, our last two Planning Commission meetings, uh, we worked out the details of the accessory dwelling unit uh ordinance, and at our last meeting, we approved passing that ordinance on to the Township Board uh for approval or rejection, uh, which I believe will be at their November meeting. And uh, I guess that's, that's pretty much what we've been working on the last couple months.
Okay. Anything, Matt, on your end?
No, just the influx of a million permits at the end of the year. Everybody's trying to get the nice weather to get, uh, get stuff going, but uh, no, no new meetings on the docket for, for November, um, so we're good there, and yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Dwayne? The other thing we, the, Heidi, remind me now what was the uh grant we sought from the DNR for the?
For Cedar Run Creek?
Cedar Run Creek. Yeah, we had the original uh quote, we got from one engineer is a hundred thousand dollars. I believe that's what it was. And then the second one was right around eighty, I believe. Right, yeah, but uh, uh, we're seeking a grant so we can get this taken care of. It's been a mess uh for years and years, and we finally have an opportunity to get this, so that's what we're going after hard. And uh, everything else chugging around?
Okay, thank you. Any correspondence?
All the correspondence we have.
Okay.
I, I took it right up until five o'clock, and they're all written off, they're all numbered, and they're all we need to check. Um, I think it was four till five.
Yeah, four of them, yeah.
Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.